President.
Lisa Austin.
Here.
Don Crenshaw.
Present.
Casey B. here. Russ Lepura. Not yet. Jim Cardman.
Here.
John Gro. Keeney Miller is not here. Paul Pan- Pangratz is not here.
No.
Uh. Lacy Luddy. No?
Not yet, no.
And Cindy Wells. Okay, we do have a quorum. Allinger, Lisa, uh, Don, me, and Jim Cardman. There's the five. So, uh. We'll go back to, we'll go on to review and approve of the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody want to make them? Did everybody read them? Or does anybody know about them?
I'm good. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Lisa.
Who's second, Matt? Who?
I think it was Don.
Yeah, I think Don edged you there, Lisa.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that is approved. We will go on with hearing of the public. Is there any public that would like to be heard? Is there any public that would like to be heard?
Yes, there are, Charles. Would you like me to manage that since I can see them all?
Yeah, would you please?
Yep, or unless Jim, you would like to, since you're vice chair. And you're with us.
Yeah, I'll take, I'd like, know who's here. I saw somebody come up, but I don't know. I don't know how I would do that. Okay, I say Frida, Frida Tepfer from Erie.
Yes, Freda Tepfer, seventeen thirty-eight West Twenty-third Street in Erie.
Okay.
District three. So I, I understand that you folks have on your agenda to talk about the Bayfront Parkway. I am concerned about how the Bayfront Parkway project that, um, uh, PennDOT is proposing, funded by, um. Oh, I forgot the, there are funds that don't normally go through the regular, uh, MPO process. Um, the Spike Funds, I think they're called. And, um.
Uh, uh, I hate to interrupt you, but can we speak to this when we come down to, uh, the business of, uh.
This is the citizen.
Charles, we're being heard.
During hearing of the public, they can.
Debate front. They can talk, but go ahead.
Well, I don't think the public is allowed to talk other than during this time. Is that correct? So that, I, I, I reclaim the time that I lost by having to respond to this question.
That's fine.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Crenshaw, I don't mean to be rude. Anyway. Um. So. In one, the, the, the Bayfront Parkway project is being analyzed as a categorical exclusion. Um, I'm quite familiar with the NEPA process, the National Environmental Policy Act, and I believe that that's a misuse of the categorical exclusion because substantive controversy over the project. Um, there's potential for pollution. Um. What the, and there's a particular facet that I feel has not been properly analyzed. They analyzed air quality impacts, but they only looked at it in terms of modeling and looking at kind of a satellite level look at ozone, at the conformance data. They didn't look at what might be called in the trade microscale impacts. They're not, they're not the minimus, they're just localized. So what are the impacts to the people walking along the Bayfront? Recreating at the Bayfront, recreating near and living near the Bayfront. Those are impacts that they have not analyzed from increased traffic levels. Also, they have, um, defined their alternative as having several pedestrian overpasses, none of which are actually funded. And, and the ownership of those overpasses is, is unclear and probably not appropriate. Also, looking at the pictures of these overpasses, I would not feel safe walking in them, except perhaps in the middle of the day, perhaps. I would feel unsafe because of just being in kind of a contained area versus being able to cross the street. Also, they are proposing roundabouts. Um, and I'm quite familiar with those as a retired orientation and mobility specialist and how they have impacts to people with visual impairments. And according to the, um, ADA coordinator and the person at, uh, the project manager, they're looking at what are the existing regulations around roundabouts. However, best management practices have moved on. And I recently attended a roundabout webinar, and none of the pictures, I, the pictures I saw pictured in that webinar, best management practices for visually impaired people are included in the roundabouts in the project. This project would not make the, the Bayfront more accessible. It would just make it easier for people from outside the county to move quickly through town and get out again. So I really, um, hope that you take a look at, at this and, um, question, A, the suitability of the categorical exclusion, and whether the preferred alternative really reflects the goals of Erie refocused and of the best interest of the people of the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna be moving on.
Well, is there?
Can you hear me?
Hold on just a second, Charles. Is there anyone else, um, from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Before we move on, Charles, I just want to, um, recognize that we do have some additional guests on the meeting tonight that we did not, um, recognize after roll call. Um, we have Michael Orr from Elk Creek Township. And it looks like, uh, Dave Tamelone, uh, from the Erie Downtown Partnership. Dave, when you were originally called in, you came up as John. Is that indeed you, Dave?
Yes, this is me. Sorry, I, I'm signed in on John Bookner's, uh, we have one Zoom for.
Yeah. It's just like you changed your name. So I just wanted to make sure that I was properly documenting who was on the other side of that.
Yep, yeah, Dave Tamelone is here, just here to observe.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, how's it going?
Good.
And then, um, we also have, uh, one of our, uh, team members from the Planning and Community Development Department, Emily Alloway is on the line as well so far. And if anyone else happens to pop in, uh, Charles, I'll be sure to let you know.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Emily.
Hello.
Okay, uh, we're gonna be moving on? Or is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Being there's nobody, we will now go to Communications. The Department of Planning and Community Development report.
All right, well, there's a lot happening, um, in the department at this time. Uh, earlier today, Ag Preservation, the Erie County Ag Preservation Board had a board meeting. Uh, and this year, they had an aggressive preservation schedule and have managed to preserve eight farms in Erie County, uh, this year. So this is, um, despite COVID and everything else, all of our work kind of continues to move forward. And so that's really great. For those of you that do have farmers in your particular jurisdiction, just know, and you may already know this, the two thousand and twenty application period is currently in progress. It opened June first, and it is through September thirtieth. And so if you happen to know of interested landowners, um, the, the application is posted on the county website under our departmental page. There's a specific Ag Preservation, um, spot there as well as, uh, on the, under the county board and the authorities page as well. Um, so just sharing that. Uh, in regards to municipal assistance, Albion's Soudo, uh, they have a hearing scheduled on August nineteenth, and, um, they're gonna then consider, uh, adoption at their next regularly scheduled council meeting. So that's really exciting because we've been working with Albion for some time on our comprehensive plan, and this was the next piece of it. So we're just kind of trying to keep moving the stakes, um, forward and, and working with them. We're also coming to close, uh, with Green Township's comprehensive plan, I think, Wednesday evening. I was looking at my calendar, uh, Wednesday evening, we have the public meeting with them. And so then from there, uh, the adoption process will begin as soon as that public meeting is held. So that's really exciting. Once again, like I said, we really not for even a moment have, have slowed down or, or stopped the work, um, that we've been doing throughout this entire pandemic. One of the other things that we're bringing online, this was, this is the brainchild of, um, John McGrainer, for any of you that have worked with him, and our Erie County Data Center Coordinator, Jeff, um, Keeler, were in the current pre-planning stages on what we're calling an economic land use analysis. So we've come to realize when we do this work with the municipalities and you, uh, there is land available for possible development, there's no real clear, can this be land, this land be used for this, or this, or this type of thing? And so, um, let me look at my notes related to this. This is gonna be kind of a countywide study related to the supply and demand of commercial and industrial sites. Um, it's also gonna study and identify parcel suitability for various commercial and industrial applications. So we think it'll help inform municipal planning and zoning, and we think it'll also help our economic development professionals be able to locate suitable sites for economic development within Erie County. We just, we've, we felt like there was this hole, um, and John and Jeff, through some of the studies that they were looking at, other places throughout the country, um, feel like this is something that we can take here in the department. So we're currently kind of lining up all those, um, things to, to start to really dig into in October and hopefully have this, uh, initial draft done by the end of the first quarter next, next year, which is rapidly approaching. Uh, we have, I am so pleased for some of you that do work on, with us on MS four. I am really, really thrilled to tell you that we have hired, uh, who, someone who I feel and, uh, one of my colleagues feels who was part of the interview process is an amazing candidate to be our new MS four coordinator. Um, his name is Eric Brown. He has, we're just, we cannot wait to get him into the department. Let me just say that. We're very, very thrilled. He is currently actually working with the Health Department, um, and will be transitioning to our department starting next week. And so we'll need a little bit of time, obviously, to get him up to speed. But we are just really kind of thrilled with the, um, the, uh, skillset that he brings to the table. We think he's an ideal fit for this role. So I'm looking at you, Matt, I'm looking at you, Jim. Um, I know that, uh, you all, um, have had experience with our previous MS four program, and I'm telling you, um, we're, we're envisioning, uh, new, uh, and better things for this program. So stay tuned, is what I'm telling you. Um, we just, we just got the official paperwork today, so this is hot off the presses information. Um. Now, in regard to our recycling and sustainability, uh, we are undergoing a recycling strategic plan with Nestor Resources. Nestor Resources goes back, goes back to the Don Lakesley days, for those of you that have been, um, in and around the county. Um, and so she, um, has put out a, uh, the municipal surveys, they're starting to talk. Um, and so there's gonna be a strategic plan, Plan Steering Committee meeting, uh, at the end of the month. For those of you that have recycling coordinators in your areas, um, there's going to be a recycling summit online, and I believe I just got the invite today, uh, I believe that's September ninth. And so, um, we're, we're keeping it virtual. It'll be an interesting endeavor. And then finally, I don't know if any of you on the line have interest or have participated in, uh, in regards to International Coastal Cleanup. That is happening Saturday, September nineteenth, from nine AM to noon. And so we're working diligently with our, um, county IT department to get that all, um, up and ready for everyone. I'm pleased to announce, and I know you all received the email, but I also just wanna verbally, uh, let you all know again that the Erie County Parks, Trails and Recreation Plan was unanimously passed, uh, by council. Uh, and so we're really, once again, shocked and thrilled by that, but know the real, the real work begins now. I think that was a little bit of a give me, I'm sure we'll pass your plan, um, but all of the kind of deliverables that are within that, uh, I think will be a little, um, a little bit more of a challenge, uh, to get unanimously passed. And so, uh, next month, we are going to try and get the, the next step in that plan underway. Um, but given everything we have on our plate and given everything that council has had on their plate lately, we thought that it was more appropriate to, um, ask them to approve our peer-to-peer request to DCD next month. So I'll keep you posted on that. COVID, uh, there are some monies for community development block grants that have come.
I was trying to burn.
Okay. Apologies, one month. Um, so yes, I'm home this evening, uh, trying to manage my family and a planning commission meeting. So, um, community, but community development block grants, uh, those COVID projects have been submitted to DCD for approval, and so we will just simply wait and see. And I will let you know that, um, Joe Burdis, our PDPG coordinator, has just on Friday sent you all some information for review. And so you'll be receiving that, I don't know, anywhere from two days to a week, I guess, depending on the whims of our postal service, um, for review and response. So he has put a very complete packet of information together for you, um, related to that. In regards to our Act one thirty-seven Housing Funds, um, we are going to be doing some single-family housing rehabilitation throughout the county. All three non-voting members of the committee have, um, favored that course of action. And two date, according to Joe, because he is working on this initiative, two of the three voting committee members have been contacted and are also in favor. So there'll be more information kind of coming out about what that will look like specifically. Um. Our data center, in addition to doing economic, um, land use analysis, getting that going, is also developing and deploying a CARES fund dashboard. Um, so the intention with the administration and our county council, the whole county, is to be very transparent with where those dollars are flowing throughout the county. And so our data center, uh, team has developed a dashboard that will be housed on the county website that almost in real time will show you where those dollars are going out into the county. And I'll talk a little bit, um, about that now. I know, um, some of you from the municipal side are interested in, in what that program is gonna look like. It is going to be a reimbursement program for municipal expenses, specifically for COVID. Ideally, we are set to launch or plan to launch, we're not set yet, we're working on it, but plan to launch that program on Monday, August thirty-first. Um, as of right now, uh, it will be an online submission of, um, all of your, your items. That will be open for two weeks. And then obviously, we'll work with you all to make sure that we have everything that we need so that we can get those checks out to you. I, I haven't run this by finance, I need to, but I would like to start the week of October fifth, getting those checks into, um, the hands of our municipalities so that you all can start to, to, um, make up for those expenses related to COVID. Our department also has hands in, um, the PPE distribution. We're working with our, um, Emergency Management Association. They'll actually do the, the, um, bundling of those PPE packages and the distribution. We're handling kind of the application portion of that, just because we have lots of experience doing grants and stuff, to be able to kind of manage that. Uh, we're also working on the broadband, uh, bucket of these dollars specifically. Um, we, the big, big thing with all of this, right, has been December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty deadline of spending the dollars. And not only that, um, DCD and federal guidance is saying, uh, for projects like broadband, you can't wait until December twentieth to turn these projects on. Um, you have to, they have to be out in the world for a significant period of time. So we're trying to, so that means, right, we can't lay broadband cable and, and things that could really have a long-term impact. We need to, um, we need to think a little differently about how we can deploy something that is meaningful, um, for the residents of Erie County. So that's still, we're, we're still working, working out what that looks like. I think that is all the, I think that's all the pieces that we are specifically responsible for or have our money in related to the CARES funding. Um, our land bank, of which, uh, Mr. Jim Cardman is, uh, a part of, developed, demolished, not developed, demolished their first property in Albion recently. So that, I mean, that is such a huge deal. Um, and they are currently reviewing the next demo in Union City. Um, so yeah, all things are just, as we said, we're, we're getting that around here. Um, our grant writer, uh, who came online in January, has really been honestly the lynchpin for understanding and developing our plans related to Erie County CARES funds. She's the one that just kind of comprehensively, um, understands all the guidance and what we can and can't do, and is talking to the auditors and talking to the finance. She's kind of the glue that's kind of keeping all of this together. So I cannot, um, give kudos to her enough. Um, and she also, uh, think back, some of you that have been around for a while, uh, to Emerge Two Thousand and Forty. Uh, that apparently is experiencing its five-year anniversary this year, and written into the plan was a review of the plan at five years. And so we just deployed an RFP, um, looking at the date here, last week, that went out into the world for consultants to review the plan, um, recommend what's still relevant, uh, see where it aligns with the other plans that have since now come online, since that was developed, Lake Embrace, Mill Creek, the reef, this plant, I mean, kind of all of these things. And that RFP closes on the twenty-sixth, and then we'll bring on a consultant meeting that will start in October. Um, once again, I think it's by the first quarter of next year, wrap up, review, and recommendations for where, where that heads. Um, and also, you know, because we're not busy enough, uh, the National Marine Sanctuary application that went in five years ago, almost, uh, at the end of this year, and was accepted onto NOAA's inventory for National Marine Sanctuaries. NOAA has contacted us and has asked us to provide additional, like an addendum, like an update, really nothing major, but an update on, in the five years since that's been on the inventory, what is different in Erie County. And so that is also something that our grant writer is working on in conjunction with the, um, freshwater marine archaeologists that wrote, um, the big piece about the historical, um, the historical ships and whatnot that are on the, the lake bottom. So that, that'll be underway, um, as well, uh, this fall. Um, so let's see, what else? Uh, yes, that would be all, uh, almost all. One last thing, um, I am definitely fine whenever, please know, I am here as the kind of secretary to this organization, um, the convener of meetings, whether it's in person in our space or virtually. Um, but something to keep in mind, uh, is, and, and I get the rationale for, for the scheduling of the special meeting, but however, every time we do schedule a special meeting, that requires a notice in the paper, um, which requires a fee. And, and so, um, I am just super aware of, of finances and everything, and, and like I said, um, definitely that, that's what you all voted, voted to do, but those are some things to keep in mind as we think about next year and what our meeting schedule will look like, which I will bring to, uh, the October meeting, uh, the proposal of dates for two thousand and twenty-one. Um, so just something to keep in mind. It costs close to a hundred dollars to put, uh, a note in the paper. And I know some of you that work up in, um, in municipalities and have to do your, your own advertising, definitely, um, understand that.
Honey, can, yeah, honey, can you just advertise that one time at the beginning of the year, all of our meetings?
Yes, so that's what I typically do, right? Um, one time at the beginning of the year, that's the standard practice. Any of our boards and authorities, we, we put that listing in. Um, but we had to re-advertise that we canceled the, uh, August thirteenth meeting and advertised that we were having a special meeting on August thirteenth. So that's a new, I mean, then that's an additional, um, a fee.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, occasionally you'll do that.
Yeah, for sure. Just bringing to the attention, because, right, those are, those are sometimes things that people just aren't kind of aware of, those behind the scenes kind of additional, um, things. So that's all I have for my report. Um, does anyone have? I just spewed a lot of information at you. I will put it all in written format in, um, our agenda, or our meeting minutes. But does anyone have any questions?
Honey, the, the reason we, the reason we changed the meeting was to accommodate one of our people to, uh, be able to discuss the, uh, Bayfront project. And, uh, we had to put it in the paper because it's, uh, the public is, has entitled to know. That's the reason it was done. And the reason the me- meeting was changed was because of that, that Bayfront Project discussion. I just wanna make that clear.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I am just simply just bringing you all in on the kind of the behind the scenes of just being fiscally prudent.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we need to follow the rules exactly, so we will.
Um, since Charles, since I started my report, I see that we have a guest, another guest that has joined us. Um. So would, for the public record, um, would you be able, would you be able to, um, to identify yourself? Unless you turned on your camera, Don, I can't tell, I honestly cannot tell.
I believe that's Mr. Horton. The president of NAACP.
I, well, I. Yep, I, I, from my, that's why I'm asking, I'm asking him to introduce himself if he wouldn't mind, because I, I want to make sure I document it properly in our meeting minutes. So whomever has called in on our QLL two zero four six iPhone, would you, would you please introduce yourself so we can document properly our guest?
Maybe he doesn't have a speaker on, I don't know.
Okay. That's all I had. Does anyone else, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, does anybody know who Mr. Horton is?
It, it, I believe, I, I believe I recognized the number from a, from an, from another meeting. Oh, there, I think that he's on now. I think it, oh, frozen. Mr. Horton? Is that, I, I think it's Mr. Gary Horton.
Mr. Horton, you are, you are, it is not, we're not able to, to hear you, but if at any point. any point, um...
May I comment that if there had, if there's a difficulty with the computer connection, it might be worth having Mr. Horton call one of our cells? And then if he wants, if he's got something to share, I mean, he could do it that way through the cell line. I've done that by holding the phone up for people who couldn't join in other ways. But anyway, I, I don't want to be speaking out of turn. I was just offering that as a possibility.
I don't know, I didn't have any trouble connecting. So let's just move on to our, our next, you did the commissioner report. We have old business?
Well, do you all have anything? Do any of you in your own areas have anything?
I can, I can talk just a little bit more about the land bank. We're also taking a look at, and Cindy Wells is on this committee, but we talked with her last week. Your new grant specialist from your office, Honey, was at, in our meeting. We did, same as we do this meeting by, by Zoom, and it, they've been going very well. We also are talking with Union City about, there's, there's two buildings within the downtown area that are side by side and they're interwoven to the corner of Main Street in Union City. And we're looking at, at, Union City's got to do something with these two buildings because the roofs are starting to collapse. Now, the, the land bank typically takes properties by ownership, either demolishes them, revamps them, and does the work, and then turns it back over for new tax rolls to a private owner or the municipality. In this situation, we're actually talking for the first time about the possibility of maybe doing some type of a grant fund to the municipality to take care of their own issues within, Union City Pride, I guess, owns these buildings. So we're talking about whether we can, we're talking with our solicitor, it's totally going to be up to him, whether we can legally start some type of a, a grant fund for municipalities to, to do this, rather than the Erie County Land Bank taking the ownership of this building and then installing a new roof on it and then turning it back over to municipality for other, other future, other future projects within the building to, to get the building back on the tax rolls. So we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to just own it just to do a roof. It's, it's really silly for us to do that. So we're looking at maybe a grant or a phased grant, something like that. It's not guaranteed that that's going to happen. It's totally up to whether our solicitor feels we can work this out or we might, you know, we might have to do something with, where the, the municipality will turn it over to the land bank. But right now, we're looking at hopefully a grant. Very unusual, most of them, it's the municipality that wants to demolish a, an eyesore or blighted building in, in a certain area, and we go ahead and take that building on, we take the ownership to us, it's usually given to us or given to us through the tax rolls, and then we demolish it, then we'll turn it back over to the municipality so it could be revitalized and rebuilt on, or maybe just made into a park or something like that.
Exciting stuff.
Okay?
That's a very good report. Thank you, Jim. I, we appreciate that.
All right.
If there's no other commissioner reports, if anybody wants to add their two cents at this point, besides me? I, I think that Honey's doing a wonderful job on this stuff because it's, I know it's depressing with this COVID stuff, but the communities have to get, move on. And speaking of moving on, let's go to old business. And are we going to table the revised administrative code again or is it going to be approved?
Um, we have that tabled, and I think that was last meeting, we decided to table that until the revised administrative code is approved by county council, and that has not been on their agenda at all. So when that, when that comes about, I will, you all know, and we can move it on the table. Yeah.
Is there anything else under business? Excuse me. Somebody have something to say? Is there anything else under old business?
No, sir.
Being there's nothing else under old business, we're moving on to new business, which is the Bayfront Corridor Discussion. And I think Lisa would like to start. Hello?
Hello, I, I just putting my camera back on and my sound back on. And I, I know that we were trying to acknowledge Mr. Horton earlier. I don't know if this is the time to, if your, if your audio is working, I don't know if you want to identify yourself as, as Honey at ass.
Gary Horton, President of the local branch in NAACP, happy to be on the call this evening. And thank you, Commissioner Lisa Austin, for your invitation.
We do, since, thank you, welcome, Mr. Horton. Since we, Charles, we've also just now had two additional guests join us. So if you could please identify yourself, that'd be helpful. I just want to make sure I can note everyone properly.
My name is Simone, an artist here in Erie, Danielle Simone Johnson.
Thank you.
This is Veronica Rexford.
Thanks, Veronica, thanks, Simone. I'll keep you posted if anyone else joins.
Okay.
Thank you. I, as a member of the, of the commission, I'm requesting tonight, making a motion that this body join with the other groups in the city now and in the state and actually in the country in asking that PENDOT follow the appropriate procedure and the appropriate environmental review. As Freda Tepfer spoke earlier in the beginning of the meeting, she just, what, what has happened is there's been a real misuse of the NEPA categorical exclusion option. In other words, whenever a lot of money or any money really, federal money is being spent on a project, the, there is a requirement that there is an environmental study. And this comes under the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, shorthand is NEPA. And so until March, this big project of PENDOT's was appropriately scheduled for what is called an environmental assessment, which includes a public hearing as a part of the process. And what happened in March is that PENDOT applied to the Federal Highway Association to have their project downgraded from the environmental assessment category to what is called a categorical exclusion category. This categorical exclusion category is an important category. It means that small projects that have no, no controversy surrounding them, that have no obvious impact on the environment, are not subject to the more complex environmental assessment. And what happened was, is without any kind of public conversation about it, is that PENDOT went to the Federal Highway Association and claimed that there was no controversy or no substantial controversy. And they also claimed that despite doubling traffic along the waterfront, there was going to be no environmental impact or no significant environmental impact. And I'm not sure how they arrived at those assertions because there has been substantial controversy about this issue. I know that last year, the Erie Times News published two op-ed pieces about it. And I know that at the different public gatherings, there has been significant pushback about it. At any rate, those of us that have been involved in monitoring this now for about five years anticipated that there would be a real public transparent dialogue when the, the environmental assessment took place and when the public hearing took place. It was a shock to us and to others, really along Great Lakes, to find out that this categorical exclusion had been applied for and granted. So I just want to read you the list of some of the organizations in, that have written to PENDOT and to city council urging that PENDOT's project be delayed until these proper and appropriate evaluations and public hearing can be completed. So we have locally, the, what is called the Erie Bayfront Coalition, and, and we had the Presque Isle Audubon, the Local Sierra Club, we had Erie County United, Bike Erie, Stand Up Erie, among other local organizations that together signed a letter, not necessarily, you know, specifically asking for this, this proper procedure. We also saw that PEN Future, a statewide organization, made the same request. We also saw that the Congress of the New Urbanism has made the same request. The former county executive, Judy Lynch, has written her own letter. I understand that the NAACP here in Erie has written a letter. So in other words, we're not, these letters are not saying you can, you know, asking for any kind of, it's, it is merely to ask that the process be followed. And so that's why, as a member of this group, I'm asking that we join these other concern groups to make sure that the appropriate process is followed. Thank you.
Well, can I tell you this? I have gone through our bylaws, and I don't see anything in our bylaws that even refers to state highways, state projects. I think county council and city council are the two people that should be on top of this, rather than the planning commission, because the planning commission has nothing to do with roads or highways. Even though I for one don't believe that that monstrosity should be put in there because it's a waste of money, I don't see how our organization can endorse something that is not in our bylaws or it has nothing to do with us. I know how you stand, Lisa, and I, I appreciate it. But I'm, I'm reading all this stuff, and the bylaws specifically do not say anything about the state or the highways. So I don't know if we'd be legal in, in doing something like this or if, or if there's a, I think maybe we ought to contact our attorney and find out if it's something that we, we should be involved in.
The, is there a mission for Erie County Planning Commission? Do we have a, like a succinct charge of duties?
Can I speak to this? Am I, can I give a word?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm strictly here as your, your secretary, however. So under section two of the bylaws, the planning commission, at the request of the governing body may, and there is a list of 14 items that you all could recommend or prepare, it's those types of things. So there are two in this particular, there are two in this particular situation that you could consider, which is number five, do such acts or make such studies as maybe necessary to fulfill the duties and obligations imposed by this act, so what that's worth, or make recommendations to governmental, civic, and private agencies and individuals as to the effectiveness of proposals of such agencies and individuals.
We are, we, a planning commission is a recommending body. If any section, none of the municipal planning code says that we're to make recommendations to a governing body. I don't know about whether we make recommendations to private entities or coalitions or PENDOT, but we do make recommendations to our governing body, which is city council and...
County council.
And, and city council and county council, both. So we can make recommendations, but I don't, I don't really know about making recommendations to coalitions. I don't, I don't know if I agree with that.
The, I probably, it sounds like I was not clear. My request is that the, that this body recommend to the, to the city council and county council and the PENDOT, that the, that PENDOT be asked to follow the appropriate environmental assessment and the public hearing that it was scheduled to have. And as, as Freda Tepfer explained earlier, she's knowledgeable in this, in this sort of, in this NEPA evaluation process, and she said that, her words were, it's a misuse of the categorical exclusion, and because there are substantial controversy and there are environmental issues, and she used the term, the microscale impacts have not been studied at all, and that's a huge issue. Anyway, but the point is, is it's not for us to get into the detail of the nitty gritty, it's just that, gee, there's a process that was supposed to be followed, it was on the road to be followed, the pandemic hit, there was no public announcement, but all of a sudden, there's no longer going to be the appropriate study. Instead, they were given a categorical exclusion, which again, those are normally granted for, say, a roadway repaving or a bridge repair, not for a $100 million project that's going to transform the waterfront. And so again, we don't have to, I'm not asking you to pass judgment on the, on the PENDOT plan, I'm asking you merely to, as, as the commission, to advise and recommend that, wait a minute, this is a big project, you really should follow the, the appropriate environmental reviews.
Is Emily on? Can I hear Emily? Is she on here? She's our...
Hi, I'm on.
Hi, Emily, is this a normal...
Can you hear me?
Yeah. It's Jim Cardman from Fairview. Hey, my question is, is this a normal procedure to do these environmental studies for all of our highway projects? I don't know, maybe you know them too, Matt.
It is a requirement.
Really? No, Matt, please.
No, Emily, you're the expert at it. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no. Well, I mean, everything's a little weird now because of the pandemic, unfortunately. But it is true that this categorical exclusion is pretty much universally done. I think the only environmental assessment project that has gone through District One was a huge muscle relocation, where PENDOT actually had to like remove endangered species and reintroduce them to like lakes and rivers that they weren't in before. So this, the categorical exclusion is pretty normal. And I would encourage everyone, I, I know with the COVID, a lot of things have not been really done as publicly as everyone would like. But the environmental assessment report is on the Bayfront Parkway website right now. It's 866 pages, it's big. There's also 105-page noise study that was done by PENDOT and their consultants. There's also compliance letters from the PA Fish and Boat Commission, the DCNR Bureau of Forestry. of Forestry, let's see, we have the Pennsylvania Game Commission, Coastal Zone Management for the DEP. So a lot of the regulatory organizations have reviewed this 866 page report and come to the conclusion that it doesn't meet federal impact thresholds. So that's, that's pretty normal.
That it does meet federal impact thresholds? It does
It doesn't. It doesn't meet any federal impact thresholds.
Okay.
So it's excluded from a lot of the additional oversight. So it's excluded from a lot of the paperwork going forward. You know, a lot of the really specific things that Freda brought up, those are really great points that probably just don't meet federal impact thresholds. They're, they are set high.
I kind of got that flavor as I was listening and, you know, it's an opinion of mine. I was listening to it and I'm like, yeah, but how many of these other highway projects have we ever had anybody bring up these issues? I don't, I don't remember any. I've been on the MPO for 25 years. Too long.
Yeah, and it also is all open for public comment now online. So I know, again, it's, it's not ideal, but you can go to the Bayfront Parkway website and enter comments in. So if, if they are missing something in their, you know, this huge environmental assessment report, 866 pages, that is the place you can tell them now and it will be open till the end of the project. So that is a place for public comment. That is, it is still open. Again, I know it's not ideal, it's not a public hearing, but it is not closed to public comment. So if something does come up, like if there's enough, the review will be reinitiated.
Okay.
Um, could I, I appreciate so much hearing from Emily. Could I share with you the screen with the, the letter from PennFuture? Would I be able to do that?
Yep, anyone can share their screen. It's, it's
Sure, why not?
Okay, so you can see my desktop and you can see the letter. This is from PennFuture, June 4th. And this is organization, I, I think that a lot of you are familiar with it already.
Yeah, this letter.
Yes, this is the letter that was forwarded to you.
Yeah.
Emily, what is your response to this letter? Because they, they very much are talking about the need to hear, the Bayfront Parkway was initially scoped as, as requiring an environmental assessment. As recently as February 27th, all the PennDOT documents indicate that it was going to be a NEPA review. The scope was going to be the environmental assessment. However, on March 31st, they requested a down scope and they claimed no substantial controversy. And again, that's not the case. And then it says, all the stakeholders prior to this time were under the impression that the process, the project would be classified as an E, as an environmental assessment. And so we thought we'd have a chance to weigh in on these issues. And then he, she writes, many did not express their environmental concerns because they were under the assumption that an EA would be conducted. So in other words, this, this seems like a very, a challenging notion. In other words, you're saying Emily, that it's normal for this kind of a project, a hundred million dollar project that's going to double the waterfront traffic to be granted a categorical exclusion, when in fact, it was not scheduled for that. It was scheduled for this, what I believe is a more appropriate evaluation.
If I could speak to that just for a minute, Emily. I, I just wanted to say as somebody who has put out bids and, and scheduled projects to be done, I think that you, when you put in a scope for a project and a timeline, you include everything that possibly could be a part of that project. NEPA is required for the project. They scoped in the time and the budget to do so, but I'm sure that they also assumed that they were going to be applying for an exclusion to see whether one was granted or not, which the federal government has granted. So that's just where I think this came into the scoping. They were just planning for all possibilities of the project.
Sure. A lot of projects, you just have to label them that way or they won't fly either. So it's
Again, so the, the solution that Penn, the, that Sarah Bennett asks for here is that if you, if the agencies and system relying on this categorical exclusion, then there must be provided to the public documentation explaining why it's being used, the rationale for why the project fits within the CE and that there are no extraordinary circumstances that require an environmental assessment. And that this should be submitted to the public for review in order to comply with the spirit of NEPA, which is to foster informed decision-making within federal agencies while ensuring community involvement. So again, there, this significant agency or the significant nonprofit is, is respectfully requesting that a public hearing be held on the agency's rationale for downscoping the project. So is it, I don't know exactly what your role is Emily or the other person who just spoke, but is that, is that something that's being planned or do you, are you privy to that information? I mean, in other words, it hasn't been particularly transparent and it's a very, it's a, it's it seems to have, according to what I can find online about what categorical exclusions are supposed to do or supposed to, the guidelines for them, it seems from what I can, I can witness that the, this project should not be allowed to do that because it is controversial and it is going to have an environmental impact. So, and it's not a small project. So again, I, I, I hear what you're saying about the timeline and I don't know who actually said that, but this, this logic of, you know, preparing for the, for the longest timeline and the most cost. But, but again, from the point of view of looking at anyone, if you look online for NEPA, what a categorical exclusion is designed for, it's not designed for this kind of a project. And so that's why we're asking this particular body to use its, its, I guess, influence to weigh in on the side of, hey, really, we should have that environmental study. Because again, the Erie County Planning Commission encompasses all of the county. And this District Two, which I'm representing on the behest of County Councilman Horton, is, is, is going to be deeply impacted by whatever is done there. And so, but to the, for the benefit of the people living in the city of Erie and out of respect for this amazing asset that we have, it seems that we would want to really check all the boxes in terms of the environmental study. So again, that's my, my hope that we can at least make that, you know, get a motion to encourage city and county and PennDOT to have the environmental assessment and public hearing as was planned as of March.
Do you really think that a letter from us, simple majority letter from us would influence anybody like the city, county or state from a planning commission standpoint?
I, I think that's a great question and that sort of goes down to voting. Does, does your vote count in general? And I think that our actions and our, we've been charged to act in the best interests of the constituencies that we're serving, independent of whether or not we think it's going to manifest itself in the, in the correct outcome. We have to act as if. And I think that it's our duty, in my opinion, to, to make this request and recommendation.
Well, one thing I don't want to have done is that it looks like we're leading the parade. How come county council and city council aren't on, on this with, with a letter?
That's an excellent question and I would like to say that I know that Councilman Horton has already written directly to PennDOT and to city council. I know on Jan, July 1st, city council was so concerned about this that they tabled the resolution to allow PennDOT to begin the project because they wanted to peruse these concerns about the environmental assessment. Two weeks later, city council removed the resolution to begin the project from their agenda and they have scheduled a special study session about this issue for Thursday evening. So city council at this point is doing what it can to honor the request that an environmental assessment, assessment and public hearing be held in the, in the, in terms of the fact that they have not allowed, not allowed their authority to support PennDOT moving forward while they consider these issues. And so I think that it would mean a lot that this body also joined again with the other, other leaders, individual leaders and different groups that have come forward asking for this environmental assessment that was again, on the books as of March.
The only way you're gonna, Chuck, I don't know if you're interested in it. I, I know I have another meeting I have to go to at 7:30, but if you're interested in, in pulling a, a group or for a vote for it, we could do that and see if, what the board members Okay, so honey, do you want to, do you want a word to
So, so Lisa will need to, Lisa will need to, I have two different things written down, so I'd like her to officially state her motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
You would need a second and then you would have a call for the vote. So I mean, follow, follow your, your procedure, right?
Go ahead Lisa, you'd be best
Okay, well, well, before I actually call, make the motion, I, I wish you would entertain just one more comment about the whole notion of categorical exclusions, which they're normally, the, the, there are circumstances that prevent that classification, right? And the, and, and so these, the classification of the categorical exclusion should not be granted if there are significant environmental impacts, which I believe all of us can agree that doubling traffic is going to change and have an environmental impact. And then secondly, that category again, of substantial controversy on environmental grounds, that, that, that is, that exists now. And then there is other, there are other categories of objections, but those two seem to be very clearly relevant to the, the issues that I brought before you. And I very much appreciate your patience tonight and I will wrap this up by saying that I'm making a motion that the Erie County Planning Commission respectfully request that PennDOT, the city council, county council and other elected leaders do all they can to ensure that the appropriate NEPA environmental assessment and public hearing are completed prior to the commencement of the Bayfront Project.
I, I agree with you to a point, but I, I really don't, I don't think they're going to stop it. I hate to see that Holland Street one, especially.
You made a motion, does anybody have a second?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? If you have no second, the motion fails.
Okay.
With that, with that, as long as there is nothing else to discuss, at this time I would call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry, go ahead, my
I'll second.
Do we have a sec? Who?
This is Matt, my second.
Matt? Everybody approve of it? Are there any no?
Okay.
Done. Okay, thank you all for participating, even the guests. I'm sure that it's a, it's a viable project, don't get me wrong. It's just that I don't, and personally, I don't think that the, the planning commission has any input to PennDOT or the state. Our, our, our district ends up in Erie County and, and you know, even though it's claimed a hundred million dollars, which is a waste of money to, in my estimation, as I said before, I'm, I'm not for it and I'm not against it. I don't know whether it would improve anything or not. So we'll have to go from there, but I, maybe down the line, we can, if something else comes up, we can have another meeting and maybe rediscuss this whole thing again. But I do appreciate all you being online and all you listening. So until our next meeting in October, unless there's something special comes up and we have to call another meeting. Thank you all for, for being very diligent and, and listening to the whole conversation, which was quite a conversation. I, I appreciate the effort Lisa made on it and I think that it would have been a close vote to begin with, so being as we had three or four people not here. With that, I have to say goodnight to all of you and thank you for, for your participation.
Goodnight.
Goodnight Charles.
Goodnight.